If we, if everybody will take their seats, we'll go ahead and get started in just a couple of minutes. Okay, good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to the rescheduled regular workshop for Tuesday, November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. And I want to welcome everybody here today. We will have the, start with the invocation by Commissioner Harvey, and I will lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Let's bow. Gracious heavenly Father, again we come before you, asking for wisdom, asking for discernment, asking for protection from this storm, and asking for our country. Today, Father, is election day. Father, just let us keep an open mind as we deliberate on these items today. Let us have wisdom directly from your throne room. We thank you for your healing, your grace, your mercy, and your forgiveness in our life. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're, I'm gonna move down and go ahead and skip the port. And we can take public comment on agenda items during those two agenda when we bring those up. So I'd like to move down to the workshop agenda and go to item A and ask Kevin Stevens to come up, head of Parks and Recreation. We have a presentation from the Florida Fish and Wildlife, Mr. Dan Colterman and his group on restoration of eel grass in the St. John's River and Lake George. Kevin, thank you.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. On October the twelfth, at the fishing fund meeting that we conducted, Mr. Colterman presented this same information to the Fishing Fund Advisory Committee as well. And they unanimously voted to move this forward to a workshop for discussion. And Mr. Colterman has the presentation. It's also, should be in your package that you have. And Mr. Colterman is here with us today to deliver the presentation.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to present here today. My name is Dan Colterman. I work for Florida Fish and Wildlife. I'm a habitat restoration biologist. And today, I'm gonna talk about restoring submerged aquatic vegetation in the St. John's River. So you're probably asking yourselves, why is FWC here today? And that reason is, is because we want to restore fish and wildlife habitat. We want to do that essentially because healthy habitats provide abundant fish and wildlife populations. And I'm sure you all are aware, Putnam County is known as the bass capital of the world. And there's a lot of folks that would argue that that has been lost in recent years. So today, I'm gonna present on how do we regain that? And first, I'm gonna talk about how we got to this point. So Hurricanes Matthew twenty sixteen, Irma twenty seventeen, I'm sure you're familiar that those, those were pretty large storms. They had significant impacts on the vegetation in the St. John's River. Physical impacts from wave action that actually ripped up and physically disturbed the eel grass. On top of that, the high dark water that persisted for months essentially drowned it out. And now, today, five years later, the eel grass still has not returned. Twenty twenty, my agency, FWC, started to look into it and try small-scale restoration. We've done restoration since two thousand and twenty, and we've gradually been increasing the size of those restoration plots as we move forward. However, the plants are trying to come back on their own. And they're essentially just getting eaten to the ground. So a little bit of a refresher as to what you'll see in the St. John's River currently. It's like I said, in Lake George and Silver Glen Springs, we built some small fence exposures. The picture on the right from showing November two thousand and twenty-one shows what those looked like. Those small exposures did great. They grew plants and vegetation that we didn't even plant. And that tells us that the seed bank is viable and that, under protection, those plants will thrive. However, outside the fence, everything just gets eaten to the ground. And, you know, if you leave them up long enough, those plants will mature. Here is a picture of a steel cage that our agency put in Silver Glen Springs. We put about twenty-five of these out there. And they all look similar to this. The grass will grow thick and lush inside of it, but as you can see, there isn't even a stitch trying to come outside because things just go around the edges and essentially eat all the vegetation as it grows outside protection. So we took that cage and to try to figure out who was responsible for the grazing, there's a video playing right now. I'm not sure if you can see it. This is what we found. I had hung a GoPro camera, and there was essentially two hours of this. And within that two hours, they ate this patch that was exposed and pretty much decimated it. So that video kind of continues on for a minute or two minutes. I'll just continue on. But you can see that there's active grazing occurring by those turtles right there. So in two thousand and twenty-two, we decided to scale up pretty good. In fact, we scaled up twenty-two thousand percent on what we did in two thousand and twenty-one. And we got a grant from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the federal agency. We threw some money at it. We built two fences in Lake George that were each one acre in size. And if you can see this picture over here on the right, those two thumbtacks on Lake George shows where those exposures were built. And so we built those that are each one acre. We cross-fenced each one. On this bottom right photo, it does not show a cross fence in the middle. But if you imagine, you draw a line down the middle, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor or not. But the left side of this fence was planted, and the right side was not planted. And that was done at both of those one-acre sites and used as a control. And so we planted eel grass in half of it. Did not plant the other half. Less-than-ideal conditions after each planting. I mean, we got northeast winds at twenty mile an hour. It staged the river up. You know, it beat these planting sites up pretty good. Water levels increased. However, we saw really great things happen. Natural germination of the seed bank at both of those large one-acre sites. In the site that we did not plant, we saw germination of plants. And lily pads started growing within a matter of days. Now, this is some drone imagery. If you look at that left image that says five-four, this fence was built on April first. So one month after this fence was built, I'm not sure if you can see, but there's little tiny pads coming up all over inside there. We didn't plant a single one of those. We planted the far side of that fence. That was the planted side. The closest side in that left picture is the unplanted side. We did not plant anything in there. So if you fast-forward to ninety days after, look at all the vegetation grown inside that fence. And look at all the lack of vegetation outside the fence. It just looks like a desert under the water out there. And this bottom-middle photo shows some dark signatures inside that photo. That's all the submerged vegetation that took off and was grown inside that fence. We had so much, so many folks reached out and wanted to help. They wanted to, they wanna support this. They wanna see bigger areas and do something themselves to help. And so we set up a volunteer effort. And FWC staff, including myself, went out and built this hundred-and-fifty-by-hundred-and-fifty-foot enclosure, which is exactly a half acre. This one here in the front on the bottom-left image. We built that in one day. We had a bunch of eel grass growing in a hatchery pond at one of our hatcheries. A bunch of FWC staff went and collected that, and we brought it to Lake George. And bass fishermen, boaters, concerned stakeholders, homeowners along the river met us there. And we planted that eel grass, which was around fifty thousand plants, and we had forty-five people show up. I had been hearing reports from many people in Palaca, Wallaca, Green Cove Springs area that, hey, we got a lot of grass beds here, but they're all very, very short. Would you mind coming taking a look at it? You know, maybe it's something similar to what you're seeing in the middle river in Lake George. And so I'd seen many pictures. I saw, I came out, I saw the plants. It all looked like they were being eaten. And so I set up a study with the Water Management District. And the Water Management District was gonna do all the monitoring. I would help them build several small fence exposures so that we could get some replicates and actually get some sound and good data for the lower part of the river. In March two thousand and twenty-two, we simply constructed one-meter-square fence enclosures, small ones. But you see them in this middle picture. There's three of them at each of four sites. So there's twelve total. And every single one of those has a control. You can kind of see the small PVC pipes out in front of each one. Each one of them had their own control. We covered thirty-five miles of river. And the district, like I said, conducted all the monitoring. So here are some photos of what those looked like after ninety days. It's a pretty night-and-day difference. And this was simply by putting fence over the top of existing beds of eel grass. We didn't plant nothing here. So again, just like in Lake George, you protect it and it will grow. This graph, don't get too caught up in it. Just focus on what the yellow and the blue is. The yellow is the controls, where I showed you nothing grew outside. You can see those lines don't really ever increase throughout the months. But look at the blue lines and look at what it does when it's protected. I mean, we're talking, we're talking grass that grew this tall, simply by protecting it. So we obviously have grazing occurring riverwide. You know, who is to blame? It is, it is a combination of multiple species of fish and wildlife, from turtles to blue crabs to tilapia, manatees, you name it. You know, there's a lot of hungry mouths out there. Here's a video that shows tilapia grazing in Silver Glen Springs. This fish is essentially just ripping, right there's a piece of eel grass. It ripped out of the lake bottom, spring bottom, and put in its mouth to try and get the algae off of it. You know, they're algae eaters. So they're indirectly affecting the eel grass population by grazing the algae off of it. And in this right photo over here, there's blue crabs that would, you know, burrow into the fences because there's vegetation and forage in there for them to eat. So what we've learned along the last few years is that there is a lot of hungry mouths in the river. But if you protect the grass, it will grow. And it brings up the case to go big. I've gone bigger every single year, and I am seeing similar results, but on a larger scale. I'm just getting larger restoration plots. However, there's an urgent need to do this now. You know, every single time a hurricane comes by after Irma, you know, we essentially just hit the reset button with Ian, with the high dark water that's persistent out there. Now we got another tropical event coming our way. The river's already high. What happens is, is these seeds that you see in these vials in the palm of this hand, those seeds are in the sediments. They're ready to germinate. They have been germinating. Every time that they germinate and they don't replenish themselves, we're essentially exhausting that seed bank. And we get to a point where the seed bank is exhausted, we got big problems. So now's the time to act while the vegetation is still, you know, germinating on a large scale. So what are some of the next steps? You know, obviously, I've said that FWC is dedicated to restoring fish and wildlife habitat. In fact, we've thrown, we're throwing a half million dollars at it this year alone. That half million dollars is going to Lake George and Lake Crescent. On October twelfth, as Kevin said, we met with the Fishing Fund Committee and asked them to allocate money to help support these efforts, you know, work together. We're here to help you. FWC is willing to assist, and, you know, we can help you in developing a plan to use these funds. Now, the St. John's River is worth a hundred million dollars annually, according to some economic studies that I've read. And the residents and the tourists that live in the river and visit the river want to see the river thriving and full of fish and wildlife. Whether it's fishing, boating, or just simply viewing wildlife, such as manatees, birds, alligators, you know, the river starts with the SAV, is the basis of life essentially. The lack of SAV will ultimately hinder the economy in Putnam County. Professional fishing organizations such as Major League Fishing, BASS, those have stopped coming and holding their tournaments in the St. John's River. And the anglers for those organizations have stated that they want to fish other venues due to several consecutive years of poor results and habitat loss in the St. John's River. Those are, those are big-money-driving tournaments that come here. Fishing guides are leaving the St. John's River and fishing other systems like Orange Lake, Lake Locklusa, Ocala National Forest Lakes, because they can't put, it's tough to put their clients on big fish in the St. John's River. It's not that the fish aren't there. It's just that it's tough to catch them. It's not like you go out there and you fish the grass beds. The grass beds aren't there. You know, they're very short. They're along the bottom, but it ain't like you historically targeted fish in grass beds. And so, you know, obviously, that puts pressure on businesses associated with the river, as you can imagine. So, you know, like I said, we're here to help. You know, we wanna, we wanna see the river thrive. We want to see Putnam County as the bass capital of the world. And so a couple of options on how we potentially make this happen is, there's not a lot that goes into building these things. All you really need is a handful of different materials. You need some T-posts, some PVC posts. You know, the PVC just slips directly over the top of the T-posts that you pound into the river bottom. You know, you put a piece of reflective tape on top of the PVC so that people can see it. It's not a navigational hazard. You tie, strap the fencing to the PVC pipes using zip ties. It's as simple as that. And you saw with the results yield. Now, there's a couple of different plans that I came up with. And, you know, I'm ultimately gonna leave it up to you all as to what you want to do. But my plan is, is the way I have this out in my head is the county purchases and stockpiles the materials. You know, they can distribute it to residents that qualify. The residents that are calling my phone saying, hey, you know, I want to see something done here. Well, I used to have fish and wildlife all over in my backyard, and I haven't seen anything in a long time. You know, these people that qualify, that have suitable conditions to build these fences, you know, whether requirements of depth, you know, there's some, there's some conditions that have to be met. But you guys distribute those materials to those who qualify, and they build them. Boy Scouts get involved, you know, you, there's concerned citizens and all those volunteers that came to Lake George. You know, there's people that are willing to help. The other option is, is the county purchases and stockpiles the materials and hires a contractor. You know, you procure the services and you manage the contractor. However, option A is extremely cheaper than option B. As I'm sure you know, contractor costs are not cheap. In fact, option B alone, just for labor, may exceed the total cost of the materials for option A. And so, you know, you can essentially get ten miles of material for what we asked the Fishing Fund Committee to allocate for this purpose. And that's enough to cover, you know, a hundred acres of vegetation. We could, we could get ahead of this. So that's my plan. I appreciate you guys letting me talk, and I'd like to thank everybody.
And for the presentation. And we'll start with, before we go to public comment, with Commissioner questions and comments. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And let me kind of say right off the bat, I'm not willing to make a decision today based on the information we have. I need a lot more information. I do appreciate your presentation, though. Disagree with some of your stuff, but that's okay. My question to you is, are you on official mission from FWC to come before us today?
No.
Okay, so you just took it upon yourself as FWC to come to here. So FWC's not sending you here?
Oh, they don't. No, they're paying me right now. I drove a state truck here, yes.
I guess my question is, is FWC sanctioning you being here asking us for money?
No.
All right. The other thing I want to talk to you about, it appears to me by your videos that you're planting eel grass, and I applaud you for that because I do believe the St. John's River needs that. But the minute you pull up the cages, you show the turtles eating it, you're showing a fish eating it, the tilapia. I was trying to make an analogy of what that would look like. It's almost like we're, and you say in your presentation that we're overgrazing. We have too many, too many competition with manatees, with fish, with turtles, eating the vegetation. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So my concern is, I can make Thanksgiving dinner, and I can put it on the table. But if I lock the kids out of the house, it doesn't get ate, and they're still hungry. I think my question is, even as raising cattle, we cross-fence because we don't let the horses and the cattle eat the same, just go down to the sand and get sand belly and have to walk them for ten hours a day. I think we need to look at alternatives other than trying to get out there and planting something that you know is just gonna be ate the minute you take that cage up, because you proved that in your video, to me.
There is a point, there's a threshold we gotta overcome.
Can we overcome that is my next question, because that's where I was going to.
I do believe we can, because in Lake Monroe, we did this in the nineties, where we planted five miles, we fenced off five miles of Lake Monroe, our agency. And we planted it, and it took off.
Did you quit spraying it, though?
We, excuse, no.
Because you're in charge. FWC is in charge of spraying for aquatic weeds in the navigational waters. And you all have been spraying the river for a long, long time. And are you, are you gonna stop that? Did you stop that in Lake Monroe?
Actually, it's the Army Corps of Engineers that's in charge of spraying the river. But the...
Actually, no. If you look at your website, it clearly gives you discretion. FWC is the one who sprays the river.
Well, the Army Corps of Engineers is our cooperator, and they take care of the St. John's River.
You pass that on to them?
That is a...
I'm not trying to be confrontational, I'm just...
But anyway, the grass persisted for twenty-five years in Lake Monroe.
Okay. All right.
There's a threshold we gotta overcome. And I cannot tell you what threshold that is. But if we don't act soon and we don't act together, I don't think that we're gonna see the grasses return.
What do you see, in your opinion, of the grazing animal? Let's just say the fish and all that. Do you think we need to start limiting some of the tilapia? For example, you saw them eating the algae off of the root and then spitting the root back out. Do you think that that needs to be addressed?
Absolutely.
So what's your solution to that?
Well, the, there's tilapia harvest that's been going on recently. You know, you can, you can, the bowfishermen do an extremely good job of, you know, targeting tilapia, but there's so many tilapia in the river. We need another two thousand and ten cold kill. We really do. You know, those cold checks that used to come more periodically and haven't been doing so recently have allowed for, you know, the exotic populations to start, you know, probably increasing their populations to where now they're competing with the native fish and wildlife, all for the same dinner plate. And so we need a little help from Mother Nature.
I hear you. And I appreciate it. I wasn't trying to be confrontational. I just really want to get a lot more information before I go out and spend two hundred and fifty thousand on something that's gonna be ate the next day when we lift the cage up. That's my only concern about that. So thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of my concerns have already been addressed by Mr. Harvey, but I want to reiterate one thing and then speak to another. I guess the first thing is here, you're not on official business from FWC here today. You're here on your own to ask for...
No, I'm here on official business.
Didn't you just tell him? Didn't you just tell him that you were not here officially from FWC to ask for this money?
No, I guess I misunderstood. I did tell him that I'm getting paid, and I drove a straight state truck here today. So yes, I am.
Has the FWC chairman sent us a letter asking for the money?
No.
Is FWC officially asking us for the money?
I'm not asking you for any money. I've got plenty of state dollars and folks matching, but not for Putnam County. The Putnam County Fishing Fund is supposed to go to fish habitat, fish conservation work in Putnam County.
Yes, sir, and I'll debate that with you if you'd like, because I'm not as nice as Mr. Harvey is. I'll flat tell you straight up, you're not gonna get me to vote for this. And the reason why is because we've taken money out of our general fund for five years now and put it toward boat ramp maintenance and everything else where we could try to get us a pot to where we could have a decent capital improvement in Putnam County out of that money instead of just using it every year for maintenance and picking up trash. That money that's in that boat ramp fund didn't just, or the Fishing Fund didn't just magically appear out of the sky. We made it happen by not, by using general funds for stuff that that money had typically been used for in the past. This commissioner wants to build a boat ramp out of it. That's what I want to do. That's for five years now. We've been trying to get Georgetown to do it. We've been to see if we could do it. If we can't do Georgetown, the location at Dunn's Creek, then the people of Putnam County have an actual capital expense, have something that they need badly, which is access to the river. That has good parking. It needs that. I understand, and I'm not even for a minute gonna say that it isn't important to have grass in the river, but exactly the analogy Commissioner Harvey made, I have wrote right here on my piece of paper. If you want more grass, you're gonna have to keep the cows out of the pasture that you have the grass in, and then cross-fence it and move them around. If you go out there and you spend the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you grow more grass in a certain spot, and then you take the, let down the gate, the fish are just gonna move in there unless you do something to the underlying problem, like the forty thousand dollar, I mean, the forty thousand tilapia that was turned out in the river. How long ago was that? Somebody can, somebody tell me. I mean, did somebody turn it out, like forty thousand tilapia into the river for some kind of an experiment? for some kind of an experiment, okay? And they were supposed to be sterile. I don't believe they're sterile. I'm not so sure that I haven't seen somewhere that there was some grass caught, caught in the river that were turned out somewhere. If you don't take invasive species and have an aggressive program to get them out of there, then you're just wasting your money going out there and trying to grow grass, just wasting your money.
Okay, well, the fishermen that paid the extra dollar into this fund for the last, since 1965, in that fund language, it says that those funds can be spent for exotic fish harvest.
They said they can be, yes. Or they can be used for boat ramps, which is why...
Are you aware that we have a boat ramp, uh, program? Is the commission aware that, that Florida has a boating improvement program? Where you can apply for funds through FWC to build boat ramps?
Since the 1960s, did Putnam County get one of them ramps for a boat ramp?
Yes.
There's a difference between having a program and actually being, getting your hands on the money. A big difference.
City got it? City just got it a couple of years back?
Yeah, but that's not the county, that's the city's boat ramp. Well, thank you. Appreciate you letting me know that. Um, so I'm just telling you that you have a hard time getting me on board with this until you do something to the underlying cause, which is what's going on in the first place. It's going to have an aggressive exotic species removal or, or something, or we're just wasting money. It's all we're doing by going in there and planting grass. It's not going, as soon as you pull the fence up, it's gone within three weeks. Uh, that's just wasting money. Um, like I said, if, if you had some kind of an exotic species removal program or the state sanctioned one or whatever, where, I don't know what it would look like, but like they're doing with the pythons in the Everglades, pay somebody to go catch some things a few bucks or whatever, then people would go after, um, uh, in a program. So, anyhow, I think that's all I have at this point of what was covered by Mr. Harvey.
Just to rebuttal the, um, the, the idea that you think the grass will just disappear in three weeks. You know, you fence off large enough areas and you, you let, you protect that for a year and allow the vegetation to grow extremely dense and, and really get their feet anchored into the sediments. They will produce seed. Those seeds will travel down river and settle out. We are currently lacking that right now. We haven't had any seed production since Hurricane Irma. So like I said earlier, the seed bank is just going to burn itself up and we're going to have bigger, bigger problems, you know, problems that are going to cost exponentially higher, you know, to fix.
Dan, didn't you just say a moment ago that you didn't need money from Putnam County? You had plenty of money from the state, or did I misunderstand you?
My money from the state's actually being spent in Lake George, which Putnam County does fall into Lake George. I'm working more or less on the south and west shorelines of Lake George. I'm hoping to see, you know, some additional work being done from Lake George through Putnam County. Like I said, we have to go big. We need to work together on it. We're not going to fix this problem overnight. It's going to take time. It's going to take a lot of area fences, but I actually, I, I do believe, you know, just like I told you on Lake Monroe, it's possible.
Is Lucian Marion kicking in any money?
Uh, Marion County does not have a, have a fishing fund where anglers contribute a dollar out of every fishing license sold. You guys have that.
Basically what you're saying today is you wish we'd spend our fishing fund money different than what we've been trying to for the last five years and saving money to do. You'd rather me give it to you and the state?
I would rather the money be spent as it was written up in the legislature in 1960X.
Are you telling me that it says we can't buy, that we can't spend it on capital improvement boat ramp? Or is that what you're telling me?
I'm not saying that.
Commissioner Rawls?
So I, I come from a different perspective. I, I think this is a no-brainer. I don't think it really should be given a lot of consideration. There's plenty of money in reserves, if nothing else. Um, but you came in here and said that the fishing fund asks that this be brought to the commission for consideration. Um, the fishing fund is a group of citizens that directs this commission and what their wishes are. And that's been a disconnect since I've been elected. And thankfully to everybody, including myself, I'm not elected anymore. I don't have to sit up here and beat my head against a wall. But I, I think that for sure, with, and especially with the proof that you've been able to present and in talking with David Girardin and Tim Motelling and some of the other folks in the Waterways and Trails Committee, this is a necessity. Um, you've got a CSO for Blue Ways and Trails that handles the bicycle trails. You could establish the same type of organization, a volunteer organization that can handle this, get, putting this in the ground. Um, set aside some dollars, uh, you know, if, if you dedicate 250,000 and 50,000 on our tranches and then go after it and see how the first 50,000 gets spent, what kind of progress is made, blah, blah, blah. You can make a lot of effort. This would also go to the strategic plan that the citizens asked us to put together. And their wishes were that we maintain our rural nature and that the river be a, a showplace for Putnam County. So I think this, this goes to what the citizens have requested us to give them. Um, I don't think this is our decision to make. I think the citizens have spoken, especially if the committee that this board assembled is saying this is where the money should be spent. And, you know, getting wrapped up in whether the quarter million dollars comes out of, um, the Better Place Plan Fund or the Fishing Fund or General Fund Reserves or God forbid, the tourist development money, um, you know, there, there's lots of dollars out there that this can be allocated from and to. And I really think that, like I said at the beginning, this is, really requires an thought process. Um, I think it should happen and for, you know, for the future of our county, for, and for our youth especially, and for the river. Um, I think we should definitely consider getting this done. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams?
How many acres did you guys plant in Lake Monroe?
I'd have to go back and look and get back with you, but...
No, about...
Uh, roughly five miles times, you know, several hundred feet wide. I would estimate it to be roughly 50 to 100 acres.
So he's, he's on pretty big there. And it, it's taken on through the whole lake or just in that area of the lake? I've never been to Lake Monroe.
It was, it was Lake George plants that were taken to Lake Monroe and planted. And, and those plants produce seed for, for decades and, and spread throughout Lake Monroe. You had eelgrass growing in Lake Monroe in areas that were never planted, so yes, it has spread.
So, I mean, Lake Monroe's a 10,000 acre lake, so, so you do have some sort of a, a scientific number. If you did 600, whatever it is, 1,000 acres, 10% planted. The issue, the only issue I have with it, I actually support it, but the only issue I have with it, I don't think that 240,000 is going to be a drop in the bucket for what's needed for the basin that we have. Um, so I, I do think based on that, it's throwing good money at bad. I do like the idea of it creates a seed, just like, you know, if you plant corn or anything else, it doesn't ever grow high enough to get the seed, so that seed doesn't get to the bottom. But I do feel strongly that the seeds that are in the dirt will last a fairly good amount of time because it's proven out in other lakes throughout the country, not just here in Putnam County or wherever. Um, so scientifically, I, I need a little more data. I support the idea under the idea that it's almost, I don't know, I don't know. It's a way to get, I mean, I don't think I can get to 240,000, but I think we definitely, I think it would allow us, if we put some money towards this and under option A, it would allow us to get community stakeholders and for other homes involved who may also start donating more funds once they see results. And it's just kind of like, uh, an incubator, so to speak. And I, I think that's, that's where, how we have to look at this. We have to look at this, that this is not the final answer. It isn't. 250 grand does not get the river back to eelgrass. I don't believe that for a second. There isn't, and I know there's several very intelligent scientific type people in here. I've grew up with a wildlife biologist as my stepfather and I was an fisheries biologist for my entire life, up until I moved here six years ago. And that, that's kind of how it has to start, but it has to be a community effort. But I think we can seed a community effort on a smaller basis. And I, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but I, I think that seed and create some sort of organization, whether it's the people in this room or, or someone, you know, heads it up and whether it's part of whatever group that actually takes that over and then works to create their own functioning money and expanding the enclosures based on citizens that want to do it. I only see us participating as a seed because I don't think we have enough funds to do what's needed to accomplish the end goal, if that makes sense.
It does. Like I said earlier, you got to start somewhere. Uh, if you, if you act or if you do not act, you know, it, if you, if we keep getting storms that come by every three, four years and we haven't fixed this problem, like I said, we're going to essentially wear out the seed bank.
And one, one other thing we do have to take into consideration as a board and as a community and as a state, um, St. John's River is one of the most important resources we have in the entire state of Florida. And I really think FWC needs to do more about it and the state legislature needs to do more about it and the governor needs to do more about it, in my personal opinion. But the, the vegetation isn't only for bass and for fisheries and for all that. It also is a filtration voice for the actual cleanliness of the water, for a lot of other things. Um, so it doesn't behoove us to have a river with not much vegetation regardless of the fishery. Um, so we have to make some, some sort of leeway, some sort of headway there. And, uh, but I think we're a small, tiny cog with the counties and the, the governments that own along that river. To be honest with you, even the federal government with the Ocala Forest, other people need to be involved in this if they really wanted to be serious, so, um, you know, and to date, you know, most of the Ocala Forest is in my district and I've had little to no ability to get any real conversations with anyone on the federal side with regards to the forest about anything that a citizen complains about. Um, so I think we need to start a grassroots effort. I, I think we should put some money into it, not 250K. And I think we need to then start lobbying the federal government and the state on a higher basis, not just you as FWC, but we need to take the science to them and say, listen, this is going to require like 2,000 acres, which is really probably at least what it's going to be for that to actually take off in the river to be back to where it was. And, uh, Putnam County's never going to be able to afford that.
Like I said, I have a budget for next year of, I think, 350,000 just for fencing. And of that, I believe I can build anywhere between 100 and 150 acres, depending on how bids come back. So, you know, like I said, you got to start somewhere. We've increased it every year. We're going to keep working at it. Um, that's all you can do. We just, we can't just sit around and wait for, for, for this problem to correct itself.
Commissioner Turner?
Dan, first off, I applaud your efforts, I really do. I know you're fighting a really uphill battle trying to get something like this done. But with that being said, at some point, somebody would eye a pot of money and go after it before we had the opportunity to use it for what we voted to use it four or five years ago, which is identify a capital project and build that capital project with those fishing funds. Uh, because we could have exhausted the whole fishing fund if we'd have used it for maintenance of the boat ramps or for garbage pickup or, or whatever. We could have exhausted all of it, but we meticulously didn't do that because we wanted to use that for that capital project. I don't have an issue if you want to do, if the, uh, the county or the commission wanted to come up with a, with a smaller program and buy some materials and, and donate them to the, to the community that lives on the river. I understand that, that, uh, somebody in your boat ramp committee actually made the comment that if the materials were available, they'd probably go put some out in front of their place on the river. Um, so I'm just saying that those type, that type of a program, I'd probably be all right with as long as they didn't take it out of the fishing fund money. Um, but we have other avenues and other pots of money that we could possibly help some with. But I think I'm more like Commissioner Adams, that we need to start on a smaller level and see how we do here and, and, uh, and maybe start on that first option you had, that first suggested, suggested option where you go buy some materials and furnish them to the public for free and let them go put the things up, especially if y'all would oversee them or what have you, that they're doing it the right way or where they're putting it's correct or, or what have you. You might could get me on board with that, but I'm more, I'm like Commissioner Harvey. I need a little more time to think about this than just bringing it straight today. So hopefully we could just maybe put it on an agenda, uh, in the near future and see at that time if we can come up with a little more information on it and, and what, and where would other be possible sources of legal funding and, you know, in maybe the 50,000 range to start with, like Commissioner Rawls said, you know, do it in tranches and, and see if we can't get a program started that would make as many people happy as possible without, without attacking the fishing fund. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams?
I, I think it's a great idea. I think it's something we need to do sooner than later. Um, not necessarily today, but it's something that we definitely need to get, get going. Um, I do think we do have to look at the areas that we do this as strategic. Just like you said, the, the seeds, when they germinate, they flow back up the river. In our case, they flow north towards Jacksonville. So the biggest benefit we may get for Putnam County is to have the enclosures that we have that are basically, we're trying to produce seed beds, basically is what you're saying. Um, so to get, generate seeds, to allow it to release the seeds into the ground. Um, so maybe look at, you know, Palaka South. Obviously, if anyone wanted to participate, it's going to generate that interest because we don't have enough money to do everything that would be needed to restore the whole river. But again, I think we need time after, even if we did this program, we need time afterwards to have conversations with the other partners along the river, which includes Duval County. Every other county that's on the river needs to be a stakeholder in this regardless of the dollar fee on the fishing fund. If we're going to take this seriously, I think we have to. It has to be a, a Northeast Florida group that decides to do this together with real money and real effort and that has to involve the state on a bigger level than $500,000. And it has to involve the feds. The Ocala Forest is a huge federal resource and, uh, they need to be involved as well. That's my question for you, is have, has anyone approached the feds, the, the parks, you know, National Parks Association about this type of activity as well?
St. John's River Sovereign Submarine Lands, it, it does not fall within the feds.
I, I, I get it, but they own the property right off of it, so they may be willing to participate because it generates people coming to their, their park, to their forest, to their land. And it also helps the manatees and helps everything else that benefits their forests. And clean water benefits their forests for growing their pine trees and everything else they do. So they do have a stake in me, even though they don't, it is sovereign. Their stake would be, it benefits them dramatically, in my opinion. Again, I've gotten nowhere when I've tried to call anything with the national forest. I've done about 20 calls so far since I've been in the scene, so...
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Turner, or excuse me, Adams. Um, Dan, thank you for your presentation. It's been very interesting. I, I think we need to participate at some level. Um, I'm, I mean, I've, Dan reached out to me to, uh, find out how the, the avenue to get to speak in front of the, um, Fishing Fund Advisory Board. So we discussed that and I put him in touch with Kevin. Uh, so we've had conversations. You remember I said that we've been pretty much trying to save this money for a, a capital project with a boat ramp? And you mentioned that there were programs and, and I have, I'm going to pass that on to Sam Sullivan and Luke, but you also said that they were usually, you know, already engineered plans, ready to go. You have your best chance to maybe get money there. So we'll, we'll investigate those avenues. Um, I have a lot more questions. Um, a lot of them have been answered, but, um, I don't want to drag this on too long because I don't think we're going to make a decision today other than that I think we need to, to look at this again with more information and maybe try to find some different funding. Um, but has there been any conversations with, um, the city of Palaka, the town of Palaka, um, the city of Crescent City, uh, because I'm sure it's up and down the river and then into Lake Crescent, we're, we're having the same issue. Um, and then maybe other, uh, other groups, civic groups that may want to, um, you know, participate in this and to have a, like Commissioner Adams and Turner were saying, an overall plan of how to attack this. I mean, where everybody is working together in a certain section and they know where the funding may be coming from and make the best bang for the buck. I hate to use that term, rather than just hit and miss here. And I'm not saying that that's what your program is about, but I think we need to, you know, get everybody together and make a, you know, concerted effort at one time.
So I have not reached out to, um, any other municipalities or counties. I started here because you guys have one of only four fishing funds in the count, in, in the state where that money is designated to go into fish conservation work, fish habitat improvements. And so I started here.
All right, Commissioner Adams?
I mean, the bottom line is if we don't protect this river at some point, that, um, all the boat launches we have in the world aren't going to matter or all of the beans... the beans, if we're not having one fishing and if we're just out there wasting gas on the river for fun. And I get it, I've, I've been out on the river for fun more times than I've been out there fishing in, in a boat. So I get that side of it as well. We need to protect both groups of people. But the bottom line is the fishery and, and the natural side of it is what's important here, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Our commissioners, before I open it up for public comment, are we just willing to table this and bring it back at another workshop? Do you know what anybody wants to do? That's what I'd like to do. You go with that, Paul?
Is there a, would the commission mind if I went and spoke and actually tried to meet with someone from the four cities that are on the river to see if they'd be willing to dispense in some way?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we give Commissioner Adams Act the authority to do this, but...
That would be Palatka, Olatka, Pomona Park and Crescent City.
Okay. Under discussion, Paul, when you do that, I'd like to go because I definitely, matter of fact, Mayor Watts has texted me and wants me to call him afterward, not about this, I'm sure it's hurricane related, but I was going to mention it to Jamie. And then also, I meet with the mayors once a quarter. So on the 14th, the 15th, I'll meet with the mayor of Crescent City, Pomona Park and Olatka. So, but I guess can we do it together?
Well, I guess if you advertise the meeting, you can. If you don't, it'd be sunshine violation. I don't even need to be an attorney for that, I can be a ruler.
Well, if you're already meeting with them. Yeah, if you, if you allow me, I'll be glad to, to do the three in the south end, if you'll take Palatka.
Okay. I'll change my motion to approve that. Chairman is going to have the three in the south end and if Adams Act's on the head.
My second. Okay. What about somebody? Okay, I will go with that. Okay, we got a proper motion, a proper second.
See you, Palatka, take it on.
Yeah, all in favor, are you saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, for the same side. Okay. All right.
I guess we use it for, be all bring it back whenever you have some information pertinent to it.
Yes. Okay. I want to make sure I've got your contact information before you get it, leave me a card or something like that. Or you've got my phone number, you just got to leave me a message. So, okay. All right. This time I want to open it up for public comment on agenda items, on this agenda items. Please limit your comment to three minutes. State your name and address for the record. And it's not reasonable for us to get into debate or deliberation on items we didn't have any prior knowledge on. So the first person is Tim O'Tellin.
Tim O'Tellin, on 05 River Sideway, San Mateo. Just like to make a little bit of a footnote on the last presentation. As you know, I assume that you may recall, I've been crying about the eel grass and the submerged aquatic vegetation problem for years and years. I have cried about how the well-thundered district, water management district, has official position on this as nothing but to monitor. There's been nothing. We've got a lot of people with a lot of scientific degrees that have done nothing. Dr. Bernstein became aware of what was going on with Dan Colterman a few years ago and reached out. Colterman's an old farmer. He grew up on a farm, he knows all about cows and pastures. He knows how to grow grass. He took it upon himself to find out past studies, what worked, what didn't work. That process has been going on for five years while he's steadily improved the process. The stuff that he's working at is crystal clear water. Beautiful. I'm so jealous. In the river of Putnam County, we don't have that. Dr. Bernstein and myself were, and one or two others maybe, made our property available for, for water management and fish and wildlife to come in and set up a cage. All they did was set the cage and there was grass. I've had five years of nothing and there's grass. There are homeowners, I've got three homeowners that are all eager to get started and doing something. You all deserve to allow the homeowners to have a method that you can develop this and a means of communication so that there can be some, something positive scientifically that comes from it. Because we obviously aren't going to get it from the people that we pay big money for. And all this, from what I've heard, is the plan is to give landowners the tools, which includes communication, which includes record keeping, which includes doing something good. One last thing, Mr. Colterman isn't down here as a person. His two supervisors, area supervisors, one from Lake City and, and the one from down Astoria where he's at, are here and are present. And if you have a question about whether it's officially designated, you can ask them.
Thank you, Mr. Tim. Any question?
Well, I don't mean to be flippant or whatever here, but the bottom line, this isn't rocket science, Tim. There's nothing that stops a citizen from getting, finding out the requirements of an enclosure and getting a post hole driver, I'll let them borrow mine, getting posts together and creating an enclosure in front of their property anytime.
And I have a enclosure that I developed on my own that has worked well and I'm in the process of ordering my own 100 foot...
So what I'm saying is, I guess there's, I guess what I'm saying is, there's a, there's a free option here where FWC could supply us with the requirements and then we, and who they would contact if you were a citizen. If a citizen chose to go and spend $500 to buy some supplies to do it for their house, there's no reason we couldn't put that on our website today or a link to FWC if they developed that and say, hey, if you're a landlord that's interested in expanding eel grass in front of your yard, you know, this is the procedure you follow, this is who you'd contact to track it, while we're waiting to decide where we get funding from. The funding to solve this problem is not coming from Putnam County, all of it. We cannot afford the, the $20 million it's going to cost to redo the whole basin, basically from the south end all the way to Jacksonville, which is really what needs to happen.
There's no argument there. There are water districts that are supposed to do that and they don't.
But, but we don't control that.
Yeah, we don't control them.
Now, don't get me wrong, I'll make more phone calls because I call people every day in my frigging life about all kinds of things. And, and environment is a huge one of them, but I think this is a way that we do it with no cost to the county. And then when we come in and add the cost, then we say, hey, if you're already participating in this, by the way, we facilitated $50,000 of materials. Then, once we have that link where people are already participating, they can come get those materials from us. I think that, I think there's something we could do today, is what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm not arguing that, I'm just observing that we've, we've lost bass masters, it's a, you know, a million dollar hit and there's a whole bunch of other and it's going to get worse. And, and somebody, in my estimation, has to develop the snowball, the, the communication and get something. So even if I put something in, whatever good comes from it, needs to have some sort of program, a record, a, a positive for everybody else and...
That's what I'm saying is...
Turning our backs on it.
Through FWC, whoever's going to track it, if we did fund it, it should be able to be tracked the same way if it's, if someone decides to do it on their own.
I'm sure you'll be able to identify who can do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tim. Thank you, Jeff. Excuse me, Jeff, you have a comment before we move?
Tim, I would encourage you to take your, take the time now, go ahead and start formalizing a group. It doesn't require any governmental intervention. Get a group formalized and see if you can't have a citizens initiative to start this and be prepared to come forward with that group and say, we're here, this is what we can do, give us the materials. I think, I think this will get done.
Okay. Ashley, we have a couple more speakers. Bob from FWC. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Excuse me, excuse me, you need to come up front? Okay. And I do have a timeline on this because we need to start this other meeting, because we got in this one meeting about, for the next meeting about, I'd say 1:20. So Lisa Rinnaman, Rynaman, sorry. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Lisa Rynaman, St. John's Riverkeeper, down 2800 University Boulevard North out of Jacksonville, Florida. And I'm, I'm here on behalf of the Riverkeeper and our members in support of this effort. But I agree with many of the comments that you all said today, that it's much bigger. Our river connects us all and it's something that we need to be working throughout the St. John's River watershed on this issue. This losing eel grass, it can undermine the entire health of the river and it's on the tipping point if we don't do something collectively now. So out of respect for your time, I'll just say, I'm here to work with each of you to see if we can combine communities up and down the river, including Jacksonville, as well as throughout the St. John's County, Clay County and the Water Management District. The Water Management District is tracking this, they have cost share money. There's available funds to work with FWC as well as the commission and the other counties along the river and, and to bring citizens together, which that's one of the things we do from a grassroots perspective on advocacy, as well as boots on the ground, hands on to build some of these cages. So we'd like to do that. But one final note, just real quick, I wanted to say, you know, right now there's an inequity in state money going to South Florida, then North Florida. There's actually environmental dollars that are generated in our northeast Florida that are going to South Florida. And so that's something our, our state legislature can help us with and we look forward to working with each of you to make sure our river's protected for future generations. But thank you for your comments today.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Commissioner Harvey?
Lisa, thank you for coming. And you and I disagree on one thing, but for most of it, you and I agree on a lot of things.
I agree.
I, I did like to hear the comments that in some areas it probably didn't need, the riverbed didn't need planting, it just needed fencing and the seeds went there. I think your group could start, how does this flow? How does the seeds go? And, and a simple fence. And truly, I think if I was a landowner on the river, I'm on a lake, on three lakes, but if I was one on the river, I'd want to fence off a little area to start seeing about the eel grass growing. It might not even take planting. It might be that the neighbor down, you know, a mile down the way planted the eel grass and all those seeds drifted up to my area. That might be a win-win situation here. I didn't want to sound controversial and that's not what I intended, but I think that if you could bring back that information to us, I don't, I think it's a big problem, but I think it's a solvable problem if we all put our heads together and come up with, you know, I hate to use the word scientific because everybody freaks out over that word and follow the science or something, but I do believe that we know that a seed travels a mile up the river, then that's where we need to go. And I agree with Mr. Adams Act on that. And, and I think that's where we can solve some of this issue, you know. And honestly, I hate to tell you this, I would love to see some of the problems that the river's having in some of our lakes because the only of the fact that, you know, our lakes are overgrown nowadays. And if we could get those eaten up, but we can't transport a manatee from the river to a lake, that doesn't work that well, you know, but lakes are overrun and you know that and you've seen that.
Well, and, and through the chair to the commissioner, I mean, the, the state is actually considering just that, moving manatees around in some cases because of the starvation issue. So I think there are ways to solve it, but I think it is something, you know, we support FWC's work because one of the great things that it's shown is that the seed bank is still viable. And it's so critical to protect that seed bank. There are new technologies, there's actually someone with a drone that wants to come out and do some plantings, but if we can save the seed bank, it's going to be much, much less expensive to save our river for everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Yes, thank you.
Who is?
So I agree with Commissioner Harvey, it's not working.
Yeah, it didn't show up.
So, you guys can be kind of polarizing in this county, but I think this is a situation where everybody come together. You guys are very well funded. I don't think it would take a lot for you to get money allocated, maybe approach the county with an idea where you have a, a participation grant, where we participate and you guys participate, equal, equal. And then you guys have a larger voice, go out and try to help raise some money and maybe help a group formalize something here that would get a citizens initiative going, not necessarily making the folks in Jackson and Clay County, the people have to come in here and do the work, but bring everybody together and synergize. But the, the one thing that's glaringly obvious is Putnam County is extremely important to Jacksonville's waterway. And that's why I would say you guys really need to step up at this point and this is your opportunity.
Absolutely. I agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, next speaker, Mr. David Girardin. As he walks up, I want to thank him for all his efforts with doing different surveys and analysis on the Georgetown Park property. Thank you, David.
Hi, my name is David Girardin, PO Box 392 East Palatka. Commissioner Harvey, I was head of the Aquatic Plant Management Program, St. John's River Water Management District for a number of years and can answer any of your questions about aquatic plant management and spraying of the plants if you would like to do that at another time. But I also worked for a number of years on the grass beds in the St. John's River. And one year we saw the grass beds disappear and I had bass fishermen and guides calling me, what's happened to the grass in the river, what's happened to the grass in the river? Well, of course, at the time, we didn't know and we had not had a hurricane, we did not have any high water issues. It was something entirely different. And within a year, those, those grass beds returned because of the seed bank. The seed bank's extremely important. We know these are prolific seeders. If we can get full grown plants seeding the river, we can overcome this issue, but it has to be done on a large scale. I was completely unaware of this program until this man presented it, until Dan Colterman presented it at the Fishing Fund Committee. And I was very impressed and I think it's a very good program. And I'd like to see your support if you can provide it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Okay. We'll ask, represent?
Not Bob.
Yep. From...
Ask not Bob.
From FWC. You're going, you're Bob today, though. Y'all would come, if you could...
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners for letting me come up here. My name is Alan Martin, close to Bob, we'll, we'll go with it. And I'm working our Division of Freshwater Fisheries Management with FWC. I'm a regional fisheries administrator out of Lake City and our region comes over to the river, as does Trevor Knight, is my counterpart in Ocala. And I think he's going to give you a little more information on some tilapia harvests that you were asking about real quick. A couple of things that I, I just wanted to make a point on for you is the, our Florida Boating Improvement Program, which funds ramps and courtesy docks and restrooms and things like that for access. I strongly, strongly encourage you guys to look into that, we can help you. We can help you with the application, we can help you with phasing it so that it has a good chance. You do not have to have the engineering completed. We do a lot of programs every year that phase one is the engineering and design. And the way that typically works, it's not a dedicated hard fast rule, but once the program funds the first phase, then it is very unlikely that they will not fund the second or third phase because at that point, the program's bought in. And I mean, that's pretty common, I'm sure, with projects you guys have too. You know, our division does have a representative that sits on the scoring committee for all those projects and so we have an opportunity to highlight projects and, and explain why they're really good for certain situations. I have sat on it several years, I think Trevor has or, or will be soon, but it rotates, there's five of us and it rotates. You know, so we can definitely help with that. We can help with, you know, how to design the application. There is a matching component to that and, you know, there's certain points and it's in the application information, it's on our webpage, it tells you if you have this percent match, you get this many points, you get this percent, this many points. So you can see where you can get the most points for the certain amount of match, which you wouldn't want to do is provide a match that's like $1,000 less than the next point, for example. So I really, really encourage you to do that. There have been several projects up and down the river. You mentioned the city docks and here in Palatka were funded over four years, I think, through that program. So really encourage you to do that and that would open up funds if you choose to do something like this, which is for the fish and wildlife habitat and restoration. do something like this, which is for the Fish and Wildlife Habitat and Restoration. And it is, it is stated that it's supposed to be in cooperation with the Game and Fish Commission, which was our predecessor agency, that's in the statute, that it's supposed to be together. So we definitely want to work with you on all of that. The other thing I wanted to point out is that you mentioned citizens building their own cages. Well, first of all, let me back up. I think you're right, I think, you know, doing two miles or 10 miles isn't going to be the end-all, be-all, but I think that the more you coordinate, just like you talked about with all these others, Dan mentioned he started here because that fund is set aside specifically for this type of stuff, it's what we're aware of. I think that, like others have said, that gets other people on board, you can show that success. You know, in '04, you guys were around in '04, we lost a lot of the eel grass in the river, but it came back, and I personally, I think, we don't have, like, research documenting this, there were other parts of the river that were unaffected, and I think those grazers were able to shift, and then it caught up, and it overcame, and then they shifted back. There were just as many grazers, there was tilapia than everything else. What happened this time is in '16, Matthew took out a lot of the grass from, I don't know exactly where, Green Cove-ish area north, and then right behind that, Irma came out and took the middle and upper river out, and so there was nowhere for those grazers to shift. So anyway, that's the difference there. The last thing I wanted to point out, you mentioned the citizens doing their own, yes, they could, but they would have to individually get permits from Army Corps of Engineers and DEP to build those exposures. If there's a county program, we can help you guys and the county get a permit that would cover anyone that is working under that program. So that is a little bit of a difference, just to be aware of. I know if I were a citizen here, I would be much more hesitant if somebody told me I had to go work with the Corps and DEP and any other agency to get permits versus I can just get the materials. So I just wanted to point those out for your information.
So could we, just based on that, and I apologize, could we start a program at zero dollars that allows people to get access if they're willing to purchase the equipment and the stuff themselves, to get things rolling?
You'd have to go, and Dan might be able to answer that.
But we didn't fund the materials.
Dan, I don't know if you can answer that, as far as the permit, I don't work with the permitting as much as Dan.
Because even what he proposed in A, it's still citizens allowing their property to be used.
I would imagine the county could likely get a permit, but I don't, I don't want to speak for those agencies, because I do not know for sure, but I don't, do you know on that instance?
I guess in Plan A, how does that work? Where's the permit come from? He'd ask.
I requested Army Corps of Engineers give me a blanket permit to work from Lake Arnie all the way to Jacksonville, and they did so. And I did the exact same thing with DEP. So it's possible. I do believe you can, you can request on a countywide basis to the Corps of Engineers and DEP, and they'll issue the county a permit.
What I was proposing is that we use the permit you already have, and the citizen, you guys publish something, says this is how you do it, and then you work with the citizen directly if they're willing to put up the funds themselves, that's what I'm talking about. Because if we just get 10 miles, I mean, your plan sounds worse the more you're talking to me, which is disappointing me, because it's hurting my head. So what you're saying is we put up 250K, we buy 10 miles' worth of materials, we're going to go to you, and we're going to say, Tim Hotelin wants to do 100 by 100 foot included. How do we do it then?
Putnam County.
Because that's how, what he described when he was speaking.
Putnam County needs to have some skin in this game. You guys have almost $500,000 of fishing license dollars.
I need to understand the process.
The fishermen provided, do that fund.
You understand, I think we're going to slow it down here.
Yeah, I want to understand the process.
And we're going to move, we're going to move.
Let's say we did put 240K to Plan A, what is the process to get a fence built? Because when I listen to you, I listen to like, well, a group of citizens could get together and volunteer and contact you and get the plan, you'd come and you'd watch it and stuff. What is the difference between that, because that's under your permit, right? What's the difference between that, and if I owned 100 acres, you know, I owned 100 feet in front of the river, and I contacted you today?
You can individually get a permit yourself. Is that what?
No, I know what you're saying.
I'm a little confused.
So, under your Plan A, Dan, then you would work with the counties, get a countywide permit, and then the citizens could use that.
I would help you get a permit.
I would help you guys get the permitting that you need, give you a scope of work, so that you could put out a bid, if you decided to go with the contractor route, I could help you acquire all the materials, you know, I could give you links to.
So what I'm saying, when I was speaking earlier, I was trying to propose a different route, right? So what does it cost to get a permit? So can you help us get a permit, even if we don't put up any money?
Okay.
You need to get a permit before you put up any money, you need to have that permit in hand before you want to.
So what I'm saying is, why don't we start the process to get the permit now then? And that way, if we have a citizen that wants to do it, they can start doing that while we're trying to figure out what funds we're going to come up with, or if we never do. Let's say we never come up with any funds.
We're not, we're not going to work.
No, I do, but I, but, right, right, but without understanding the process, I don't have good information presenting to the city.
We need to sit in, probably with him individually, so, because I need to move this forward. We're not going to solve this here. I appreciate the program, I agree with the program. I think we need to participate in the program, we just got to figure out how and how much, and it needs to be, we need to have some items cleared up.
He's leaving your card, because my thing is the process thing.
One thing that's been tossed around loosely is, if somebody needs to come up with a prescriptive design that the average homeowner can utilize under this master permit, that they can go out in front of their bulkhead or their dock and put a cage, or whatever you want to call it, I think that's the disconnect here, is whether or not that technology would be available to the average consumer, and then somebody can go out and spread the word, you know, you can build this thing either with your dollars or with publicly provided materials, but I think that's going to be a key component.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I know he's got a tilapia report, y'all will be, y'all will be back, trust me, at another workshop, okay? Okay, all right, and, thank you.
Thank you, my name's Trevor Knight, I'm also one of the regional fisheries administrators. Just want to give you a little information about exotic species on the river, we are aware of that as a huge issue. So we have been partnering with cooperators like the St. John's River Water Management District to get commercial anglers out there fishing for tilapia. Last year, we had a pilot program on Lake Winder in the Upper River, which is about a 1,500-acre lake, and in three trips of haulsanning out there, they harvested over 23,000 pounds of tilapia. It gets a little trickier the further north you go, because we start to deal with saltwater species being present more frequency of manatees, and also American shad, which gets into the federal realm. But we are trying to expand that program, we may be trying to do some commercial fishing on Lake George with haulsains, and see if we can also harvest tilapia that way. That's going to be a partnership between commercial anglers, the district, and ourselves. But I think the key thing here with all of this is partnerships, so I am more than happy to work with all of you on getting you any information on the river, and trying to create more partnerships with other counties and cities, so I'll be happy to leave my card with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you for that presentation and good discussion, and I'm sure you'll be back, okay? And I'll be in touch with you. Okay, any other further public comment? If not, we're going to recess for three minutes before we start the next item. If not, we're going to recess for three minutes before we start the next item.
I'd like to reconvene the Board of County Commission workshop, and we'll move down to the next agenda item, which would be the vacation of Bass Drive. Mike Nimitz, you want to start?
Thank you, Chairman. Robert Cartwright has submitted a request to vacate a portion of Bass Drive. It's 110 foot by 50 foot that lies in front of his residence at 100 Bass Drive. Mr. Cartwright owns a property on all three sides of the portion of road being vacated. Statements of no objection to the vacate have been received from River Park Utilities, Clay Electric, and Putnam County Emergency Services. Public Works takes no exception to this vacation. If the board chooses to move forward, Putnam County Public Works will present a resolution on the November 22nd, 2022 regular B OCC meeting, consent agenda, authorizing the advertisement of a notice of public hearing for the proposed vacate and final resolution consideration on January 10th, 2023. Public Works is requesting the B OCC to provide staff with approval to present the attached resolution at the next B OCC meeting.
Okay. Any questions of Mike? Okay. All right.
I think we kicked this camera out for a little bit.
Yeah. Okay. Before I ask Mr. Cartwright or legal counsel to come up, this item came to us a couple of years ago and was tabled, and then it came to us six, eight, seven months ago, and we tabled it again to get a title search done. And that title search has been completed, so here we are again today. And Rich, from that title search, the company said that Putnam County is the owner of such road. That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Okay. All right. Mr. Cartwright, you want to come forward? Or Patrick?
Patrick Kennedy, here on behalf of Mr. Cartwright, and my address is 673 Third Avenue, Lulaca, Florida. Part of my, part of the reason, one of the things I have is kind of a question from the start, and I think it was answered during one of the breaks, but I wasn't really sure where we stood procedurally with this thing, given the passage of time and starts and stops. So we're not going to try to hear this matter today. We're not expected to present any evidence. Is that my understanding? So this is just about settings for a future hearing. And we're, you know, we do believe there's reason to move forward with this for obvious reasons. We've applied for it. Procedure says you guys will consider such applications, and we're just asking for basically our due process, if you will, to present our case at a future hearing. So I don't, without getting into particulars of why we think this thing should be vacated at this time, I'll save that for an actual hearing.
Okay.
If there's anything else, if you need to hear any more, I guess that's kind of what I'm not sure what we're, we need to do.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Turner?
So basically, all they're asking, all we're here to talk about today is to move it forward and discuss it in hearing. I move to move it forward and discuss it in hearing.
Second. All right. Would this two, and Rich, would this be one hearing? Or would there be two?
And just so it's clear, I guess staff has asked it, it'd be on the consent agenda to notice the hearing for January 10th. So that's kind of the decision you're making by the motion, I guess. Just correct?
Okay, well, can we ask one question at this point, or just take it forward and not ask your questions later? So did I understand you, I just didn't know, I want to make sure, though, you, probably either one of you, Bobby can answer somebody, I don't care, but do you own the land now all three sides except for the road? You bought the road, the Boat River Club's portion of?
Speaking to Bobby, if you would speak into the microphones.
Yes, sir. Bobby Cartwright, 127 Tennessee Avenue Crescent, CD. Yes, sir. I have bought that, and I would like to read it, that that has not been challenged. That was in 19, and it's mine.
Bobby, I have a couple of questions since we're here. So I know you purchased the land where the modular home is.
Yes.
Correct.
Mr. Frager's property.
Exactly. So then your second purchase was roughly the outer perimeter, I guess, of the road that goes from Bass Drive to the inlet to the lagoon, and then goes out towards Lake George. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's about, we're just guessing, eight or 10 foot wide along the bulkhead, around the circle, boat circle, down to the bulkhead along the canal. So I own about 10 foot down this way, 10 foot down this way, and the whole lot over here. So your road, just like this, goes into my property. It does not, your road does not touch the water here, or you own the road, and I own everything around it. And I purchased this and this from the Boat Club for the exclusive reason that the bulkhead was failing, and the Boat Club has not built, Mr. Frager had done that bulkhead right, but it started failing. But all the way around, and you're familiar, because it's your district, there was a bulkhead all the way around that whole thing. And as many things in the river, the Boat Club never did have the money, and all those bulkheads have completely fallen in. But my, all of that road and all in front of my precinct property would have, and I not bought it. So when I bought it from them, I agreed to fix the bulkhead, of course, and to give a deed restriction that I would not build a competitive boat dock on that property. There wasn't one in front of the house, and I just, I did a restriction, a deed restriction that I wouldn't build a bulkhead. But other than that, there is no deed restrictions, whatever.
Okay. So the existing, you answered one of my questions. So the existing docks in there, who owns them?
They own, they belong to the Boat Club. When you get to that one right at my house, Chairman, the first one, that's dock number one, they're rented for $100 a month to people of the River Park Boat Club. And that's part of the exclusive lot 32, which was set aside for the inclusion of a Boat Club or whatever it was. It's held by our board members, and we rent that and maintain. Y'all actually own that little grass section in the middle, we call the island, that we have a bridge built to. That is actually Putnam County property. And a lot of people use that to fish and see the sunset and do whatever. But we maintain it.
Okay. And the Boat Club or Boat Dock Club is still in existence?
Yeah, yes, sir. We're supposed to meet tomorrow night, but we put it off for a month, I mean, a week because of the storm. We meet on Thursdays, I think.
How do you become a member of that club?
Oh, you have to be a resident or a landowner. It's $40 a year. You pay $5 for a key to get to our boat landing, so you can use our boat landing. But it's just a honorary membership thing. So then you could maybe rent a slip under the covers if you don't own one. Like in my case, I own so many rental properties that I own multiple slips there, so people sometimes will rent a slip for me. The boat basin that we call where the pontoons are, that's restricted to pontoon use only, and those are built and maintained by the Boat Club, and it's $100 a year for that on top of your $40 membership. So, but supposedly, if you use any of our Boat Club property, you're supposed to be a Boat Club member, a $40 a year member, which would be a resident or a landowner or both. Like, you know as well as everybody here, I'm in the rental business, own a lot of rental property there. So we offer any of my renters that want to be a member of the Boat Club, we would pay that $40 for them so they could take their kids to the river or whatever. But it's exclusive thing for River Park East and West, east being the Mobile Home Park, west being the Stickville side. I happen to own on both sides, or property on both sides.
Okay. All right. As Mr. Cartwright said, and then Mike with his purchases, our dedicated road at the end of Bass Drive does not give you access to the water unless you would cross Mr. Cartwright's property now. You may not be able to answer. Is that correct, Bobby, I guess?
He doesn't draw it as well.
Yes, you own this portion here back.
I do, sir.
No, there's, the rest of the Bass Drive, the Boat Club owns the remainder of that. He's only, he only owns roughly 100 foot of it.
He just said he bought it, you're not listening.
A portion of, a portion of Lot 32. He did not buy all of Lot 32. So all those boat slips going around the rest of the radius still remain with the Boat Club. He only bought a portion in front of his.
Right, I understand that, but where the road comes in for the purchase that he bought, what he bought, you would have to cross his property to stand there and fish.
Yes, you would have to, yes, to access the water at the very end of Bass Drive as it currently stands, without the vacate in place, you would have to cross his property to access the water. That's correct.
Okay. So the vacation of this road is not cutting off somebody's access.
No, it is not.
To the water they can.
No, sir.
They can enter from the lagoon side or that little island, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
And Mr. Cartwright wanted to, he could basically go down and fence off the area on two, on three sides of that, and nobody could get out of the fence to get to it anyhow. He owns the land around the lagoon side and out the inlet.
Okay. All right. So the motion is on the floor to move this to the consent agenda on the 22nd, to set the time, the date and time for a public hearing in January to where we would have the opportunity for public comment for or against, and that's where this board would make the decision to complete the vacate or not. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. But one last comment before you vote, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to bring it up that I went and talked to legal counsel, and I asked him straight up, could we declare this park, this property surplus and then just sell it? If you want about, well, I don't know. And he told me, no, we couldn't do that. But I needed to bring that up because I've had multiple people in River Park that's basically said, put it up for auction. If we can't buy it and Mr. Cartwright can buy, pay more than us, then fine, then let him have it. But that's not an option. It's a road, it's a road, and the only thing we can do is own it or vacate it, from what I've been told by attorney. So if that's the case, that's the reason I'm willing to move this forward and not declare it surplus and sell it, is because we don't have another option, and this will get it off our, off our tax, and put it on the tax roll, off our ownership and put it back on the tax roll. That's why I'm for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Any other comment? Okay. Got a motion on the floor, all in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, same sign. Okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll move up to the Port Authority Workshop. Any public comment on Port Authority Workshop items? Seeing none, general discussion on Port Authority items? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to Port Authority Workshop, and we'll move down to Commissioner requests, Commissioner Rawls, or Commissioner comments, I'm sorry.
I think I had my say earlier this morning, but again, I greatly appreciate the opportunity for service and look forward to less obligations.
Commissioner Adams, act?
Just everyone get out to vote and then be safe.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I have nothing to add.
County attorney? County administrator?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. My comments, Commissioner Rawls, wish you well in your next endeavor. It probably will be somewhat nice to be able to say, you have to call somebody else about my road or something like that, so, but thank you.
Should be able to say that damn commission.
You should see my calendar. It's amazing when you start clearing your calendar, what it really looks like in the future. It's actually pretty, pretty nice, so. And we got a pool going in. I wasn't joking. We actually started digging a swimming pool yesterday, and we'll be enjoying a lot more time and with family and friends. So thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your service and the service to this commission. So for no further business, oh, public comment, public comment on miscellaneous items? Okay, seeing none, we stand adjourned.